It is now 7:03. The Board has reconvened from closed session. Mr. Islam, do you have a report?
The Board has not taken any actions. After the end of the open session, Board will reconvene closed session again. So no action was taken.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a full Board meeting, but first, let's have Sofia Argeno. Argeno, eighth grade student from J. Hugh Middle School, ASB Vice President, to come lead us in the pledge.
Good evening. Please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, Sofia. Next, we have comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation. Mr. Islam, do we have anybody?
Yes. Laura Dean from J. Hugh.
Good evening, Board members, parents, guardians, and fellow staff members. My name is Laura Dean, and I am the proud advisor of J. Hugh Middle Schools ASB. Back in August, I had the distinct pleasure of taking eighteen of my ASB students to Pali Mountain in the Big Bear area. Pali Mountain is a camp designed to assist groups like ASB in becoming stronger leaders. I was not alone on my weekend trip. Mr. Rod Campbell from Rialto Middle and Mrs. Shelley Gates from Kolb were also there with their ASB students. We participated in a scavenger hunt, learned archery, sang karaoke, competed in a ropes course, and did the zip line. In the midst of all this fun, we met many new friends, learned new campfire songs. Happy llama, sad llama, totally rad llama. Oh, sorry, maybe another time. We swapped ideas for pep rallies, lunchtime activities, and dance themes. All three schools want to sincerely thank you for allowing us to go on a weekend getaway, to not only learn more about ASB and what it takes to be a leader, but more about ourselves as well. From the Kolb, J. Hugh, and Rialto Middle ASBs, we thank you and can't wait to go again next year. As a separate note, moving on from our thank yous, J. Hugh would like to offer an invitation to our secret guest judges in the district judging the red ribbon contest, to stop by J. Hugh, to exit your vehicles, and to come and participate in our Red Ribbon Week maze that we will have set up on the front lawn of our campus. So please come and partake in the festivities that we have planned. Thank you.
No one else?
No.
Okay. Next, we have comments on the agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation.
None.
Okay. Next, we have presentations. DSAC student presentations, and usually, our student Board member, Mica presents, and maybe Saidah, you can assist.
Oh, I was gonna hand it to you. Okay.
Thank you, President Ayala. First, we have Jessica Villapondo from J. Hugh Middle School.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Acting Superintendent Mr. Islam, and the viewing audience. My name is Jessica Villapondo, current ASB historian, and in the spirit of October, it is a treat to be here tonight. ASB is currently selling ice cream after school for $1. Also, we are currently fundraising candy and chips. Want some? They're a dollar each. I kind of owe myself $3, but shh. Boo! Ah! Ee! Did I scare you? October 30th, ASB is having our Halloween dance, so make sure to come in your costumes and dancing shoes to dance the night away. It's only two hours, but it'll be a night to remember. Red Ribbon Week is right around the corner. We are all going to wear red shirts this Friday, the 25th, to support non-bullying and being drug-free. Our motto is, "A healthy meat is drug-free." Be sure to stop by J. Hugh next Tuesday, the 29th, and check out our Halloween drug-free surprise. We intend to win first place and take home the red ribbon trophy like last year. Mr. Islam, thank you for the $1,000 first-place prize money. You can just write the second check for us now. Be sure to vote J. Hugh. Woo-hoo! And DSAC, thank you, Mr. John Roach, for the team-building activity at our last DSAC meeting. It's nice to know that we can do more with yarn than just knit. That's all from J. Hugh. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Next, we have Jorge Nunez from Cussera Middle School.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Acting Superintendent Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. My name is Jorge Nunez, and I am the ASB President at Cussera Middle School. October has been an eventful month for Cussera's student body. The 12th, our Avid program took sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to a UCLA football game. Go Bruins! The 14th, a meeting was held in order to inform parents about a student trip to Washington, DC, that will be offered by World Strides in June of 2014. Do you wanna go, Mr. Islam? The 16th, we had a family math night, which was done to help improve student math skills. This week, we began to decorate the campus for Red Ribbon Week to show that Cussera is drug-free. And also, on that note, Cussera wants to take the trophy for Red Ribbon Week. And the 24th, we will have our Red Ribbon Week Assembly, which is called Dream Dare Do. Later that day, we, Cussera, will host a student dance called the Glow Dance. In order to honor Cussera students with perfect attendance, on the 25th, we will be hosting another dance specifically for them during sixth period. On November 1st, Cussera will be hosting their Breakfast of Champions to honor the students that will be, that followed October's character trait, which is safety. Our football team won one game and will be playing in the semif championships, and our volleyball team is excited to be playing the championship game this Saturday, October 26th. As of now, the volleyball team is currently undefeated and has been for three years. Our championship cheer squad will also be participating this Saturday. That is all for this month. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
From Frisbee Middle School, Jordan Dixon.
Good evening, members of the Board, School District, and parents. I am Jordan Dixon, ASB representative for Frisbee Middle School. ASB is off to an amazing start this school year, with the return of Falcon Radio and our school-wide fundraiser in full effect. We are sure that our ASB program is going to have a successful year. Our school-wide fundraiser has launched September 10th and was held for exactly one month. We so far have ordered and distributed over 400 cases of chocolate. That's a lot of chocolate. Students that have participated have the chance of earning a trip to Knott's Berry Farm and a trip to Disneyland. We have definitely, we definitely have a lot of students interested in these fantastic school-wide field trips. We will also participate next week in the nationwide Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week. We will work in conjunction with the PE department and decorate our school to make every student aware that FMS is drug-free. We will have campfire productions out here next week, speaking of the importance of being drug-free and a bully-free school, and demonstrating how to live a healthy, drug-free life can help you achieve your dreams and goals. Thank you for your consideration. This is all the information we have for ASB now. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
From Kolb Middle School, we have Richard Acosta.
Good evening, Honorable Board members, Acting Superintendent Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. I am Richard Acosta, Kolb's ASB Vice President, and it is very nice to see you all here tonight. I wanted to give some information as well as to what has been happening at Kolb Middle School. We had our very first dance of the school year just a couple weeks ago, and we had a blast. Over 175 students showed up to show their dance moves. We are all sorry that we didn't get to see any of you there to show us, young ones, how dancing is really done. It's okay. Maybe next time. Red Ribbon Week started today, and we've been decorating the school, and Kolb is happy to announce that we are positively drug-free. We are all pledging to be drug-free now and in our future. We are hoping to be successful in our bright futures so that we can make a difference in our community. You are all invited to Kolb's Fall Carnival. It is scheduled for October 30th. That's next week. We are having this carnival to celebrate the fact that we are number one in the district for top middle school CST scores. We will be having inflatables for the kids, but we will share them if you wanna jump around with us. Kona Ice will be there, and the In-N-Out Burger truck. Mmm, yum! Along with the photo booth, plus so much more. Please consider this as your invitation to attend. In fact, everyone is invited to come out and share the festivities. It, uh, it'll be fun, and if you bring canned, a canned food item to help our canned food drive, you will see a discount to the fun. That's it for me for now. Well, until next time. Have a great night, and thanks for your time.
And from Rialto Middle School, we have Andrea Succi.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Acting Superintendent Mr. Islam, and our viewing audience. My name is Andrea Succi, and I am the ASB eighth-grade Vice President. This has been a very busy couple of months for Rialto Middle School. We have received our API scores, and although they were not as high as we expected, there was still many shining lights among them. Our carnival on November 8th will be to celebrate those students who were proficient or grew, and to prepare for our road ahead. Avid hosted a family night October 10th with Anthony the Magic, where dinner and a show were included for the admission price. They had over 300 family members in attendance. Our ASB attended a middle school leadership conference hosted by Rialto High School, where they mentored us on what leadership is and how to make your campus come alive with spirit. It was great working with the other middle schools that day, and the high school students were terrific. We hosted a very successful Farmer Boys Night to raise funds for our counselors and their incentive programs in conjunction with Kolb Middle School. We have hosted two energetic dances with over 200 in attendance at each. Our next dance, called Chamber of Screams, will be on October 30th from 3:00 to 4:30. You're welcome to come if you dare. This week is Spirit Week, so grab your hats and giddy on up, because tomorrow's Wednesday. Yee-haw! Just last weekend, our boys' flag football team continued their success with the third complete season undefeated, with the win over the Falcons of Frisbee. And on Saturday, the 26th, cheerleading, volleyball, and football will be fighting for first place. Thank you for your time, and have a great evening.
So you can see a lot going on throughout the district, and that's good to hear, good to see. Next, we have some special recognitions, and we'll start with the REA recognition, and that will be presented by Clerk of the Board, Mr. Martinez.
Good evening to one and all. I'm here tonight to honor Frisbee Middle School math teacher Susan Meeks. Susan, please join me. Do you have family here tonight? Bring 'em on up. We can, we can embarrass the entire family. Susan is the Rialto Education Association's Employee of the Quarter. Quite an honor. Ms. Meeks was born in Los Angeles and graduated from Gardena High School. She earned her teaching credential and her bachelor's degree from Cal State, Los Angeles, in Child Development. Before coming to work at the Rialto Unified School District in 1991, Ms. Meeks also worked in Los Angeles, Riverside, and San Bernardino City Unified School Districts. "In Rialto, I found my home." She smiled. "I love working with the kids, and we, as teachers, learn from them as much as they learn from us. It's a dual relationship of respect and knowledge." Ms. Meeks' first job at the RUSD was teaching first grade at Henry Elementary School. She then transferred to Kelly Elementary for five years, teaching first and second grade. She transferred to Curtis Elementary for seven years, and then, in 2005, started working as a Math Algebra I and Algebra II teacher at Frisbee Middle School for seventh and eighth grades. Yes, vested interest from the principal. Ms. Meeks is the mom of two grown children. Her son Samuel is a student at UC Riverside, and daughter Sylvia is a student-teacher at Dahlan Elementary. Another principal with a big smile over there. Ms. Meeks says that in her spare time, she enjoys scrapbooking and watching movies. She is also involved with the district's Honor Our Own Annual Employee and Retirement Committee, and is an active REA Board Member. Quite busy. "I am surprised and humbled that I was selected," she replied. "It's such a wonderful recognition." REA President Lisa Lindberg said that it was an honor to select Ms. Meeks. "Susan is always ready to lend a hand." She has been a member of our volunteer REA committee for four years, or four years, "and a dedicated site rep," said Ms. Lindberg. "Susan is a representative you can count on to let her site know what's happening. She represents her colleagues well. Congratulations, Ms. Meeks." Thank you, President Ayala, Ms. Meeks. Please shake the hand of the Board.
Next, we have a presentation that goes out to CSEA, and that will be presented by Ms. Gilbert.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have the honor to present our Employee of the Quarter to Michael Harrison, Officer Michael Harrison. Where is he? All right, Michael. A San Bernardino County native, the 41-year-old officer grew up in Rialto. The Harrison family, is this your mom and dad?
Yes.
Please, come on up. She, she doesn't want to... Yeah, I understand. Come on, Dad. He wants to lean on you for support, so that's what we do. Right. And I want to say that Sharon, Michael's mother, retired as his secretary at Kolb... Was it Kolb? Kolb Middle School, so congratulations on your retirement. How many years did you work there? Eight years. So we thank you for your service to Rialto Unified School District. Father Lauren, this is Lauren, moved when the Harrison, to Rialto when the Harrison boys were young. He has three younger brothers, Shane, Ryan, and Chad. The memories that I acquired growing up in our home were great. Any sport or childhood game, we all could come for, up, we were played in our yard. That's during the time when children played outside and didn't watch games on, or play video games. We would go swimming at our neighbors' homes that had pools. We played games there. Memories that I gained from my neighborhood would spill over into the community as I got involved with recreational sports. It was a great time with great family support. Officer Harrison attended Morgan. Any cheers for Morgan? Rialto, then Rialto, it used to be Rialto Junior High, now is Rialto Middle School. And Eisenhower, he's an Eisenhower graduate. After graduation, Officer Harrison began working full-time with his uncle at his book binary business. "Right away, I began having this desire to get into law enforcement," he remembered. "I enjoy helping people who are in need, and I always, and I always have. I realized that I could do this for the rest of my life and be happy, and I decided that is what I wanted to do." Officer Harrison joined the Rialto Police Explorers Program. Once in the program, he was quickly promoted to the ranks of Lieutenant. Officer Harrison put himself through the San Bernardino Sheriff's Basic Law Enforcement Academy in 1994. While attending the academy, he received a full-time position in August of 1995, working for the Rialto Unified School District as a Campus Officer. Officer Harrison graduated from the academy with a 4.0 GPA in September of 1995. He remains employed with the district as a Campus Officer at Cussera Middle School. Go Cussera! Throughout many years of experience working as a Campus Officer, it has been rewarding as well as challenging to work with both the middle school and high school-age adolescents. "The rewards far exceeding the challenges," he said. "I sincerely enjoy working and developing personal relationships that I have been able to acquire working as a Campus Officer." Cheryl Decker, is Cheryl here? All right, Cheryl, there you are. Rialto Chapter CSEA President said, "From his biography, you can observe that Officer Harrison has had a passion to serve students, staff, and the education community. He is friendly and a caring man with a big heart, and he is always ready to assist with a moment's notice." On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations to our CSEA Employee of the Quarter, Michael. On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations to our CSEA Employee of the Quarter, Michael. And I want to shake Father's hand, and this is your certificate. Would you like to have a word to say?
Oh, of course, you would make me say that, right?
Yes.
I'd like to take this time to thank the CSEA for the award, Ed for nominating me. I don't know where he went. He was here a little bit ago. A little bit ago? Oh, okay. Ed, I thank you. I also like to thank the district for giving me an opportunity to do what I enjoy. The students, my colleagues, partners, and supervisors that I've worked alongside over the years have helped me shape the skill set that I have, the integrity and the professionalism that I have. Last, but most important, I'd like to thank my parents for raising me to be the man that I am today and with the love that you share to everybody that you come across and with the work ethic that helped me obtain this award. Thank you.
You're so quiet. Whoa. I probably don't even need those. Okay, well, tonight, it gives me great pride to present the RSMA, Rialto School Managers' Association's Employee of the Quarter Award to the one and only Mrs. Robin MacGyver Brown. Come on down. And would her family come up too? Okay, Mrs. Brown is the Senior Director of Categorical Programs and Services for the district. In other words, she's the money lady. A Fontana native, Mrs. MacGyver Brown was born to Floyd and Joyce MacGyver. The MacGyver siblings, Rhonda, one of the leaders of the Parents Center, Ria, principal of Rialto Middle School, and James, all graduated from Eisenhower High School. I love to see how many people we honor or recognize that graduated from high school in Rialto and returned to work in Rialto. I just think that's a wonderful tribute to what a great town we have. After graduating from IC in 1983, Mrs. MacGyver Brown attended UCLA, graduating with a bachelor's degree in psychology. She also earned her master's degree in administration from Pepperdine University. Mrs. MacGyver Brown began her public education career as a teacher's aide in LA Unified. From there, she went on to work at San Bernardino City Unified as a teacher. It was the career choice she desired. "Ever since the first grade, I always wanted to be a teacher," recalled Mrs. MacGyver Brown, "but I also love what I do now every single day." And you know, I always wanted to be a teacher too. I used to line my dolls up and teach them. In February 2000, she accepted the job to be an Assistant Principal of Henry Elementary School at Rialto Unified School District. In 2004, Mrs. MacGyver Brown was promoted to principal at Kelly Elementary. Impressively, three years later, the school exited program improvement status and the school's Academic Performance Index jumped from 603 to 711 points. That is phenomenal. One year later, in 2008, Mrs. MacGyver Brown was promoted as the Director of Categorical Programs. In 2010, she was promoted as the Senior Director of Categorical Programs. "One day, my English professor at UCLA asked me where I received my schooling," recalled Mrs. MacGyver Brown. "I told him Rialto Unified, but I then asked him why. He replied, 'Because your paper was so well-written. Your district did an excellent job preparing you for university.'" That was a great compliment to our district. Married to Jimmy Brown, Chief of Police at Cal State San Bernardino, the couple are busy raising two daughters, one who's attending Cal State Fullerton and another who is in the fifth grade. "I'm very much a dance mom," Mrs. MacGyver Brown laughed. "In my spare time, that is all I'm doing, going to ballet, tap, jazz, and hip-hop classes. You name the place and I'm driving there." Well, the next time we do Gangnam Style, I'm gonna... We'll battle. Daniel Husbands, Principal at Dahlann Elementary and the President of RSMA, said, "Robin has worked tirelessly to make sure Rialto Unified is ready for federal program monitoring. She always provides assistance and direction regarding categorical programs, ensuring that the primary and only focus is on student achievement. Despite the amount of pressure that she may be under, she always has the most pleasant demeanor and continuously places things in a positive light." She is deserving of being named an Employee of the Quarter. On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations to Mrs. Robin MacGyver Brown.
Great, congratulations.
It's quiet.
It's very quiet again. I just have to say a few words. Normally, when I get behind this desk, it's answering a question for the board, so I get a little nervous now. But I just want to thank everyone, all of the managers. Everyone is so deserving. We come to work and we love what we do. And I kind of like that remark, Dan, about a nice demeanor because I've been a little grouchy lately. I think I've been under federal program monitor pressure because next week is our week, but we have an amazing ed services team and I wouldn't want to be any other place but Rialto. Yes, it was around 2007, the last time I touched this desk, when I was appointed Employee of the Quarter. And at that time, I was the proud principal of Kelly and I read the names of every one of my teachers because without them, we would not have been able to do the work that we did at that school. It took a staff that believed nothing was impossible. It took a group of parents and the most awesome students in the world to do what we did. And so I have the privilege now. I cried for three days when they said I was promoted to the district. And people, my sister said, "Why are you crying like a kindergartner?" I said, "Well, I'm not too worried about the kids. They're pretty resilient. They can take care of the teachers." But I was so concerned about who would take care of my staff, who would love them, who would be their cheerleader. But I had a wonderful replacement in Linda Minor and I'm proud to say that Kelly Elementary School still is out of program improvement. And so every time I come up, I will always remember that journey we took. I will always remember those teachers and those students and those wonderful parents. And just like the young man from CSEA, I have an awesome family. My husband fooled me because he took my daughter to dance and I said, "Well, that's okay. You're not going to make it back." Then lo and behold, I see him. He was in jeans and an old t-shirt. And so he made it. And my daughter is here. She's in Cal State Fullerton and I love her because I was the person who gave her her first memorable words. "Mommy, pick me up. There's no one else here at school." I said, "Oh, you are so wrong. There's always someone at school. The custodian is there. You are okay." And so, and then to my parents, who travel wherever we come, near and far. Everything we do is like a family. They've lived in this community for 43 years. At one time, my mother wanted to move, but I guess that hope is over. They are where they are for 43 years and they have been strong supporters. And my oldest sister, who is running around somewhere, I'm glad that I have the opportunity to work with both of my sisters. Mary Ann Coco, she may be somewhere running around here, but she has worked with all three MacGyver sisters and she's still sane and she comes to work, so I love her dearly because I don't know how many people can put up with all three of us. And finally, to my boss, to the one who keeps me grounded and the one who has taught me how to relax and smile and whistle and just let things have their way and also be calm and patient. And to our Acting Superintendent, thank you so much for your support. And I thank all of you. Thank RSMA.
Next, we have a presentation of the Rialto Unified School District Common Core State Standards. The plan is going to be presented by Dr. Susan Levine, an Associate Superintendent, Educational Services.
Are we sitting here or do we go?
I think if you can just scoot over maybe you won't have to. If that's okay. Saeda, could you lower the lights a little? Beautiful. Well, good evening, Board and audience. Hope everyone is well this evening. And we have been putting a lot of work into our proposed plan for the Common Core State Standards. As you know, this is considered a transition year and so we are busily working so that next year, we will successfully launch our new Common Core curriculum. So the governor's budget was very kind to us and we have received, and the money is in our coffers, $5.3 million to implement the Common Core State Standards, which we call CCSS. And what you need to know about the money is it's only for two years. It has to be completely spent by next year. So it's for this year and next year. And you'll see in the plan, we talk a lot about math and not as much about English Language Arts, and that is because there will not be any new English Language Arts materials until 2017, whereas the math books will be available to pilot in the spring. So this money does not cover adoption for English Language Arts and usually our adoptions go at about $1 million a pop. So we are hoping that there'll be more state dollars along the way. And so, the monies that came to us can only be used for three specific purposes. Professional development, and that's for anyone who deals with students, instructional materials that are aligned to the new Common Core standards, and also the integration of technology-based instruction and technology that will support the new computer-based assessments because the assessments will be taken on the computer. They are saying, right now, we'll have three years where we could still use pencil and paper if we want to, but really, that is still kind of sketchy since we really have only seen some examples of the assessment. We're not really sure. The information has been slow in coming to us, but we want to be ready in Rialto. We want to be at the forefront. So even though we just got the money for the transition to the Common Core, you should know, Board, that we have been working, actually, last year was my first year, but the year before that, our Professional Development Center began doing professional development for teachers and the department was already in a lot of conversations about the Common Core. And you can see that our plan is going to be in six areas: assessment, curriculum, instructional strategies, materials, professional development, and policies. So I'm not going to read all of this for you, but you can see in each area, we have already done several things and I'll just point out a few of them. In assessments, we've taken the trials and we've already done some performance tasks. In curriculum, we've created awareness. We've been looking at what our scope and sequence can look like. In instructional strategies, the Professional Development Center has been so busy and our goal is to train every teacher in the district, which with a small staff is a big goal, but they're working every day. Our focus has been depth of knowledge, close reading, accountable talk. Materials, we have begun, especially at the K through second grade, we have purchased some supplemental materials and also with Q funds, some of the schools have purchased iPads as well as laptop carts and many of the elementary schools have already purchased the laptop carts. We've also written a new eighth grade math course that's in place this year, an eighth grade Common Core math. And you'll see that we haven't done anything with policies yet that will be in the forthcoming plan because the state has been slow in providing all the information and we don't want to change the board policies until we are, you know, sure of what needs to be changed. So those are the things that we've already worked on. So how was this plan drafted? The first thing the Educational Services Department did was identify the six focus areas, which I have pointed out to you in the previous plan. And then we picked, we really put our heads together to write these overarching goals in each area. So this is the one goal that we want to accomplish. So in materials, we will identify and provide materials that align to the Common Core State Standards to empower teachers and students with the tools they need to bring a strong academic foundation because all of this is about teachers and students and support staff. So what steps will we take to bring them the appropriate materials? For instruction, we'll ensure that teachers utilize rigorous, research-based instruction based on the design principles within the Common Core State Standards. So we need to make sure that all our teachers are trained. In curriculum, we will develop a viable curriculum for all students that is aligned to the Common Core. And the curriculum would be our scope and sequence, what they're going to learn, what the units will look like. For assessments, we'll identify, develop, and administer rigorous and relevant formal and informal Common Core State Standards-based assessments through a variety of methods. So even though there will still be some multiple choice, there are other kinds of assessments in the Common Core. There will be some multiple choice, but there will also be what are called constructed responses. There'll be performance tasks. So we have to make sure that the students are practicing the kinds of assessments that they'll have on the new smarter balanced exams. Professional development, we'll provide ongoing professional development to all staff in the transition towards full implementation in conjunction with our instructional priorities. And you'll notice that we did not mention technology as an area because instructional technology and the hardware is integrated within the six areas because technology plays a key role in each of these six areas. So you'll notice that in your packet board, you have a spreadsheet. And the IT department, along with ed services, worked very hard in a needs assessment to figure out what we need for the S-Back testing. And along with the directors, they went out and they went to every school and they conducted a needs assessment. And the proposal is to create at least one computer lab at each site, also with upgrades for the sites that already have labs. And you could see that the estimated cost to upgrade and create the labs is approximately $2.5 million. And especially at the elementary level, we do not have the hardware for the exams. I believe it was 183 computers are S-Back ready. We really have not had a plan where we replace computers on a regular basis. We really have not had a plan where we replace computers on a regular basis. And so now, you know, we really have to get serious and, and put these in place. And you can, you can read this at your leisure, you'll be able to see. Some will require drops that have to be made because there are no labs. And eventually, you know, we have a plan for all the schools to be wireless, but that's through our E rate and not through the Common Core monies. And so the, this is the proposal at this time for $2.5 million. So the first draft of the plan was developed by the directors and coordinators. And you'll see in the plan board, which you have a copy of, it's about 20, 23 pages. You'll see each of the focus areas. And you'll see that we include the person responsible, a timeline, the evidence, because every goal needs to be measurable. What is the evidence that we have completed these objectives? And also estimated funding needs. The thing about the funding, you'll notice, well, I'll tell you. If you add it all up in the plan, it's $6.4 million, not $5.3 million. Because not all of our needs can be funded through, through the Common Core plan. Because we just need too much. And so we'll have to supplement either supplemental things where, where it's possible through categoricals and also through some of our regular textbook money. We will have to supplement the plan at about $1 million. In this first draft, we spent approximately 20, 20 hours working on it. Okay. So then, once we had a draft of the plan, we went to get input. And this was big. First, we brought the plan to the district advisory committee, parent advisory committee on October 4th. And all the parents in attendance were able to make comments and ask questions. Then on October 11th, that was challenging, because we had to have everything translated into Spanish. But it was very neat, because our D LAC parents had a lot of very good questions and comments to guide the Ed Services Department. At that point, every classified and certificated employee received the draft copy of the plan. And they were invited to the gallery walk on October 15th. That was held at Rialto Middle School, where any teacher or classified staff was able to come and do a gallery walk with the, the plan posted on the walls and make comments. And we got a lot of feedback from the gallery walk. But in addition, I also, for people who weren't able to attend, I received many emails with suggestions. And then the directors have been going out to individual sites, talking about the plan and answering questions. So we feel very confident that everyone has had a chance to put their input in. And bless my secretary, Michelle, she typed up every single question and comment from all of these groups for, for the directors. And so we really took the input phase seriously. So then we revised the plan. And Board, you'll see on your copy that in blue, those are the revisions based on what the input was from, from our staff, from our parents. They really gave us some good input. And there were a lot of questions. And because there's so many questions, we're in the process of having an F A Q, frequently asked questions about the Common Core and the Common Core Plan at the Ed Services new webpage as part of the new website. So it should be in place with the help of John Roach within the next week or so. And we'll provide the board with a hard copy of the F A Qs. And so what's next? The way the law was written, the board, the plan is to be presented in an open board session, as we are doing this evening, and giving that to the board to look at. And of course, as you read it, if you have questions, feel free to contact Mr. Islam. And he'll direct the, how you would get the answer from him, from me, from one of my staff. And then, based on your input, if there are other revisions that need to be made, we will make them. And the completed plan will be brought back to the board for your approval on November What questions can I answer?
With the $2.5 million referring to the, the lab upgrades and things like that, is that also including the laptop carts that are going to have to be purchased for most of them?
No, that does not include the laptop carts. This is only to configure a lab, a stationary lab. So the schools can buy laptop carts out of their, out of their funding that they have. Many buy one a year. I was just talking to Kathy Knowles from Myers. I believe she has four, four carts. And so some, you know, some schools have been making technology more of a priority than others. But they do have categorical money that can be used to buy laptop carts.
The high schools might have a little bit more of a problem, because simply the number of students and the number of laptop carts they would need, that would be a lot of funding. So perhaps we need to, to look at that again.
Well, we would, we would be happy with extra funds to, you know, to give the school sites some more. This is our initial proposal. Yes, we definitely, if we can find the funding, we would like to put more in if, if possible. And some schools are in better shape than others. For example, Eisenhower and Rialto High School, who had Q funds, have infinitely more technology than Carter High School has. Carter's, High School's technology has never been upgraded since the school was built. And so, you know, that's a stumbling block and we have to look a little more, more closely at that. But they will, you know, get an upgrade in their labs so the students can take the test. But no, it won't be enough.
Right. And, and we have to keep that in mind. That's a real concern. Next question. With the math in particular, I've been hearing from some teachers, they're a little distressed that we don't seem to have decided yet as a district. Or are you meeting with groups of math teachers to get their input on whether we're going to stay traditional or go with integrated math? Because especially if we're transitioning to integrated math, that there's a lot of things that go along with that.
Absolutely. Yes. Andy Luna is going to be presenting to the principals at our professional learning network. And from there, they're going to invite the math teachers in for a conversation to look at, at pros and cons. This morning at our department meeting, Ed De Souza had a chart. And it looks like many of the districts have chosen transitional in our, in our area. Fontana, Chafee.
You mean traditional?
Tradi, no. I'm sorry. Integrated. I'm still thinking about transitional plan. Thank you. They've chosen integrated. And so.
I heard just the opposite.
Yeah, the, the majority of the districts in our area have chosen that. But I'm going to take another survey Friday at the Assistant Supes meeting with the county, because I just want to double check. So yes, the teachers are definitely going to be involved in that. And, you know, we're not, you, the textbooks have not even been, won't even be approved till after January. And so for us to even be able to look. So we do have some time, because there's no materials approved at this time.
Right.
But the teachers will be included, for sure.
They have a lot of very valid concerns about credentials, number one, because we have several math teachers at the high school level teaching on supplemental credentials, which only authorizes them to teach through the ninth grade and through the Algebra One level. Thus, if you go to integrated, which would be Algebra One and Geometry, are they going to be qualified to teach those classes? So those are some of the logistics that we really have to look at.
Absolutely. More, more than likely, they would be qualified to teach the first level. But do they have the conceptual understanding to teach all of it successfully? We're not sure.
Right.
So you're right, we do have to look at all of that.
And the other thing would be, I mean, a suggestion would be, if you try, if you do the integrated and you just try to do it cold turkey, like, okay, school year 14, 15, we're doing integrated math, we're pretty much going to have a mess.
No, it has to be grandfathered in because of the, yeah, exactly. Because of the, the pathway that the students are already following.
Okay.
Right.
Well, I know we've got a lot of teachers hungry for some dialogue, so.
Yes, they, they will definitely have the opportunity. And some of the dialogue has already occurred at the Curriculum Council meetings. But we're, we're going to be in good shape, I promise you that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, Board? Please.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. This is really a good plan monetarily, a good groundbreaking foundational plan for the labs. But I do want to encourage Mr. Islam, yourself, and the board to support having all the technology purchased out of IT rather than give it a choice on site.
No, it will all be purchased out of IT.
Well, moving forward, it, it really is a policy change. Because up till now, Carter has not been updated, as you mentioned.
Right.
With this policy change, it would be updated every four years at the maximum length of time. And the money would come out of IT's funding, which means it has to be built in. So that being the case, it's, it's a great start. But we can improve always. So, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. It is the beginning to make sure that all the schools have a lab in place, because some elementary schools have no labs. But you'll notice in the plan that something we've been talking about in Ed Services, and of course, I've only been here a short while, but evidently, there used to be tech technicians that worked in the labs. And when those positions were eliminated, many of the schools dismantled their labs because they didn't have anybody to, to keep, to keep it up. I mean, they, they just don't get taken care of on their own. So with the addition of these labs, you know, we seriously need to have a conversation, when I say we, I mean the district, about whether we need those positions to maintain those labs. Because, you know, this is expensive equipment and we don't want to see it abused and, not on purpose, but, you know, classroom teachers don't always have all the knowledge to troubleshoot in a laboratory setting and things like that. So that's, you'll see it in the plan as mentioned, as kind of investigatory. But we're thinking about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Board? Okay, thank you.
Well, we thank you, Dr. Levine and your, your staff. You're doing a great job for us. Before we move on, we would like to give a member of our community an opportunity to speak. And that's Mr.
Hi, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I came here to voice some concerns regarding the recent developments on the Judy Oaks case. And basically, my biggest concern here is not the money, it's not the superintendent, it's not all, any of these. It's basically one group that I'm here for, the kids. I, I think when we, these things resurrect, we forget that the whole reason everybody's here is because of the kids. Everybody's making money because of the kids. And everybody's here for the kids. And it doesn't really matter what color they are. It, because they're, are our kids. And one of the concerns that I had as a community activist was the impact that this $13 million, I'm sorry, $3 million over a 14-year period had on the nutritional program of the kids. That money that wasn't being used for them had to be used, had to take away something from them. And so people are not focusing on, on the impact on the children, they're focusing on the impact of the money and who took it. And I think to, to add to this is that the superintendent, I was hoping, was going to step up to the plate and work and find out how that problem could be remedied. But it wasn't. Instead, he spent his time fighting allegations of a romantic affair with Ms. Oaks and charging board members with having a racist campaign, which doesn't help the issue, doesn't help the kids. In, in fact, it, it detracts from the issue, because he's, he's defending himself on one end regarding a relationship and he's attacking board members on the other end. And what makes it worse is that, and one of the other reasons that I'm here, is that he alluded to the fact that it was a racist agenda. And included, not only our Edgar Montes, but O'Reilly, who's, doesn't look Hispanic to me. But that, as being part of this Mexican-American conspiracy. So I'm here to say that, that this superintendent had, had issues in Linwood Unified, I'm not going to get into it, but he was dismissed. He had issues in Compton Unified, and he was asked to resign. And then he was picked up at Rialto. What happened there? Why, what, and I think the other problem is, is the fact that the money that, he's getting more money than the state superintendent of public schools in San Bernardino. He's getting something like $380,000. And what bothers me is that he's retired. And I think that talks to another issue of superintendents, that why are we paying so much money for superintendents that are retired? And I think, I think in the final analysis, what we need to do is focus, and we see the kids, that we're right here, on them. And we focus on what they, what, what was done to them by these folks and what can be done to alleviate it. But if we get into this thing about accusing people of having agendas, racist agendas, and splitting us, pitting us against each other, we're not going to get anything done. This is for the kids, we're here for the kids. We're not here for African-Americans, we're not here for Mexican-Americans, we're not here for anybody other than kids. And all that, last time I looked, the kids here were all colors. So I guess I'm, I'm here to say that I was very concerned that this issue, one, that the issue of the kids losing their nutritional program, and the other issue was that it was starting to become a racist agenda that has no place in Rialto Unified. Thank you very much.
The next item is D, public hearing. And we have none. Next, we have the consent calendar items. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by Board of Education members or acting superintendent for individual action. Can I get a motion to approve E through J?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
All second.
Do we have a discussion?
Oh, are there any?
No discussion?
I just had a question on H3. And I, my question is just, I'm kind of curious as to these three separate contracts for Stanley Convergent Security Solutions. They're all for the same dates, date span, and they're all for the same amount? Can, can someone explain that to me?
Bill, could you come forward and clarify this, please?
Good evening, Board. These particular contracts are for software. They're also for equipment, and they're for service for our Stanley Sonatrol Security Alarm System throughout the district. We had an upgrade on all of our equipment recently. These contracts were all entered into. The problem was, is when they were first entered into back on August 22nd, there was a, there was a mistake, an error in the amount of money that they were, that was being charged, that was being charged to us. So I was able to catch this and actually reduce the amount of money per contract over the five-year period. So it saved us a the five-year period, so it saved us about $28,000 over the five-year period per each contract.
Nice.
How come there's three for the exact same amount? That just seems a little odd.
Yeah, it's a franchise deal. So Sonatrol is a franchise.
Okay.
And they have specific contracts for their software, which is proprietary, and that they have also their, it's their software, and then their equipment is proprietary also. So you have to have a contract for each one.
Okay. I'm not trying to put you on the spot here, but I've just noticed since I've been on the Board, we seem to ratify a lot, or, I mean, in this case, apparently, it's working in our favor. But it seems like when we enter into these contracts, shouldn't the people we're dealing with know what their costs are going to be, and we stick to that price? Because many times, it's been ratify this, and it's usually adding more money.
Yeah, this is actually amendment to the original contract, which we caught the error and reduced the amount of money they were trying to charge us.
That's always a good thing when you guys reduce the amount of the contract as opposed to increase it, so thank you.
Those are the only ones you're allowed to bring us anymore. There you go.
I just had one more, just for clarification, Fund 21 is?
That's Measure Y.
Okay.
That's the bond fund.
Why is the bond being used to pay for Sonatrol?
That was in the original bond resolution to pay for the upgrade.
For security, yes.
For security and surveillance systems.
Yeah, and I think it's important, you know, if it curves the corporate theft and, you know, and any vandalism and...
Yeah, that was in the original bond resolution.
We got to protect the schools.
Okay. Very good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Any other discussions? Any pulls? Okay. We have a first and a second. Can we get a vote from Board members?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, E through J. Next, we have discussion action items. Action items will be enacted in one motion unless members of the Board of Education request specific items to be discussed. We're voting to approve K1 through K5. Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
And I have a poll on number four, K4.
Okay. Any other polls? Okay, discussion?
Well, this might be a question for Bill again. I'd like to know why we have a disputed claim in the amount of $1,460,000. This goes along with what I just said, so...
Okay, this is concerning the California Multiple-Awards Schedule contract that we entered into with Field Turf for the fields we just looked at today.
Right.
We had a lease-leaseback project that was with NEF Construction, who was the general contractor basically over the whole project. They provided bonds, performance bonds, for Field Turf. Well, when we got down to the fact of the California Multiple-Awards Schedule contract being paid, the county schools said that they exceeded the amount of money on the portion of the installation was exceeded 10% of the total cost. And so what happened was, is we, the bonds that NEF covered for them wouldn't fly, basically, because we exceeded the 10% total labor in that contract.
But isn't that the fault of the contractor?
Well, it's part of the, the CMAS system says that you can't exceed 10% incidental labor. And so that was the issue. So there was an issue because that was probably the first lease-leaseback contract we did. We assumed that, which was not a good thing to assume, but we assumed that the NEF Construction's bonds covered them, which they didn't. And so when we went to county to pay this, county schools, the school payables over there said that they had to have their own bond. Well, they can't now, it's done, the job is done. And so we got a opinion from Carol Green at County Council, and she said that you have to go this route by bringing in a resolution to you to file for a disputed claim, because they can't go back and get a bond for a project they've already finished. So basically, that's why we're bringing this to you.
So this is, but we're authorizing to pay these people $1.5 million? That's what it says?
For the project that they did, that they've already completed. So it has to do, when you buy on CMAS, you're buying on a contract that's...
Well, what can we do? I mean, this is a very expensive lesson to learn, to me, a million and a half dollars. My God.
Well...
What steps can we take to prevent this?
I think that we learned a big lesson in this lease-leaseback.
No more lease-leasebacks.
Well, we learned an issue, we learned a problem, because we bought, what we thought we were buying was just material, but yet there was incidental labor. And the incidental labor exceeded 10% of the total contract, and that's what messed us up here.
Now, the incidental labor, is that leveling the fields that needed to be leveled?
Yeah, that's basically the installation. So basically, it wouldn't have been able to have exceeded, you know, $140,000 or 10% of the 1.4 million. So that was kind of a very unique situation, because instead of, because we got an exceptional cost price on that by buying at CMAS. It was like, we got an exceptional price. The problem was, is they exceeded, the labor exceeded that, and we thought that the general contractors' bonds would cover them, but county would not allow that payment. So we can't pay them, and then it'll just go to a disputed claim unless we go this route. That was an opinion by County Council.
Board, I'd like to be clear, Bill, this 1.4 is not the cost of the bond, it is a...
It's not the cost of the bond.
Make it clear, because I think there's a confusion. Please make it clear.
No, this is the cost of the project.
Project.
The project cost. So when you have a $1.4 million project cost on CMAS, if you're buying these products through CMAS, they, no incidental, the labor cannot exceed 10%.
Okay, but isn't the general contractor the person who has to make sure the labor does not exceed 10%?
Well, that's the issue here.
Remember the concrete we had a few months ago? I mean, we are paying for these contractors who just say we need more money, basically.
Well, this was not, this was an issue that was a, I don't know how to say it, but we purchased through CMAS so that we got an exceptional price on the material. The problem was, is we exceeded the 10% in incidental labor.
Our construction management exceeded the price, is that correct?
It's incidental labor because of, as you seen the field today, it certain things that we, they didn't expect to, you know, it was not planned that it was going to exceed 10%. So through the project, they are, there needs more work to be done to level the field and put the materials, the artificial curve on the ground, so that exceeded 10%. So it is not that...
I understand that that happened, but somebody has to be in charge, and somebody has to be watching that, and somebody has to make sure it doesn't happen. And that's, I mean, this is what I just said, we are constantly going back to contracts and approving more money for whatever the reason is, and we don't have that kind of money to just give away. I mean, somebody's got to be in charge, somebody's got to be watching.
I just, if I may, with all due respect... I just wanted to say one thing real quick, Board President, if I may.
Please, please.
I just would like to share with the Board and with the community, we have some questions, some issues that need to be looked at from previous work that was already approved. This is a futation, the fields that are already built is the futation of what was approved, you know, months back, possibly, you know, a year or two back. So we do have, I would like to remind the Board and the community that we do have an audit for contracts, consultant services, and looking at the policies and procedures for those contracts and services. So I would just like to ask the Board that we be patient and wait for us to get the audit results back. That way, you know, we can collectively look at whether we need to revamp our policies, our procedures, and maybe whether we need to, we look at who we're doing business with and who's providing the services for our district, particularly, you know, our Measure Y funds, because, you know, as we were on the tour today, we said, well, thank God, thank God, these are beautiful fields, but, well, and then I think Nancy said, well, we need to thank the voters, because the voters are the ones that pass the Measure Y. So we owe it to all the people in our community and the taxpayers to make sure that we're doing our due diligence for these funds and how we're using these funds. So I can understand Mrs. Locelli's frustration, I agree. And sorry, Bill, you know, we don't mean to put you on the spot with your questions, but I think not just with this case, but previous cases is part of the reason what led up to us wanting to audit and take a look at all of our services. So I would just like to say that I think if, let's wait for the audit to be completed, let's take a look at everything, and then, you know, we'll move from there. But for clarification, does this mean we need to, because somebody, possibly somebody that was providing a service for us didn't do it correctly, we're going to have to fork this bill here?
Well, we're doing two things. First of all, the job is done, we cannot pay the bill because of the bond issue, county school cannot release the payment.
So is this item for us not to pay this?
No. These items correcting the bond issue because they're not accepting the bond by the NEF Construction Company, who assuming the bond of the project. So only way we can correct that, by adopting this resolution approved by the governing board tonight, so we can release the payment to the contractors who did the project. But one thing I'd like to ask the Board, I'd like to go back and investigate and bring a report to you with your approval tonight, why we exceed 10%. I need to know myself, why, and we need to hold them accountable.
That would be...
And I'm telling you, and I want to hold them accountable, you are absolutely correct, this is our taxpayers' money. And there, if this is their mistake, they have to pay the price.
Well, I definitely think it needs to be, this is getting out of hand, the number of times we go back and pay contractors more money.
Mr. Ralph?
This is actually not any more money, it's just we have to pay them. In order to pay them, we have to do the resolution.
I know, but like I said, somebody's got to be in charge. Somebody should have been watching and making sure that labor didn't...
I think there was possibly an issue with the legal, you know, the legal portion of the lease-leaseback wasn't quite clear at the time, whether we could do this with CMAS, even though we were getting a super deal, we still, it was a technical, it's a technicality is what it is.
I get it.
But the only way we can pay them now is to do this, according to County Council.
There's an old saying, Bill, you get what you pay for.
Yeah.
So it might have been a good deal, but it's not a good deal now.
Well, it's really not that much extra cost, it's the difference between, you know, 140, you know, that was the problem. It's the bonding issue is the problem.
One more question.
Mr. Ralph, did the contractor have to go in and correct anything from the previous contractor?
No, it wasn't that. They ran into some additional things that had to be done, though, that they found, especially at Carter High. There was some additional things that they ran into, electrical lines and things that they had to regrade. So I mean, it wasn't, it was a normal change order, it wasn't really a change order, but it was a thing that it cost a little bit more to finish up, but we did exceed the 10% of, you know, incidental labor.
And so we got a great deal, help me understand, on the whole package, including labor?
Mm-hmm.
Or was it only on the turf, and labor is on a sliding?
No, this is the whole, it's the whole package, it just exceeded the 10% of the total cost, project cost. And so we can't pay them because of the bonding issue, that's purely what this is, it's a technicality is what it is.
What was the original price, so maybe we could release that and then work on the balance?
County schools won't, they won't release it, they won't release the payment.
Let me be clear to the Board, the amount you're reading on the resolution 1.460424, the labor built into the number, that number, it is a total cost, including the labor. So when you're breaking this number, labor costs exceed 10%. When you itemize that number, so it's not that we're paying additional 200, 10%, so we get a good price, including the labor, labor and material 1.460. Now, when county school reviewed the breakdown, they say you exceed 10% of your labor.
By how much?
Is a little over $100,000, correct?
20%, yeah.
Yes. So that's it, it's a technicality of the, how you're breaking the number, labor and material. But did you get a better deal by combined total? Yes, we did. 1.4 is, we're not paying any additional cost to the project.
Right.
It is the breaking, the itemized breakdown of the project, it is a technical issue. By 10%, the labor should be below 10% or...
If the labor had been under 10%, we wouldn't have to dish out $1.4 million.
10% or less?
No, no.
Up to 10%.
That's not, go ahead.
No, it's not what they're saying.
I'm sorry, may I interject here?
Please.
May I interject here that the way I see it, that in the beginning...
Can you please state your name and your title?
I'm Iris Chu, the Director of Facilities Planning. I was involved in this project in the middle of construction. After reviewing the original contract proposal from Field Turf, I find that original number doesn't show clearly how much of the total amount is belong to the labor part and how much of it is the material part, so it's a combined total. So when they submit the invoices, it shows the labor separate, the labor and material, the labor means installation. And if, so that's when the county discovered that the labor exceeded 10% of the material and that break the CMAS rule according to their statement. Right now, if we start with, to abide by the CMAS rule, we may have to separate the purchase of the material and bid out the labor part, the installation of the turf. And they may, it may come back with a little higher, we don't know, we don't know. So right now, I think we got, originally, we got a good deal, it's because it's one contractor who supplied the material, who installed the material, they have the technology. Therefore, I think we got very good deal. So it's really at this point, we cannot pay them because this technicality issue, and we asked the Board to consider, give authority to let us pay them.
Question?
Yes, so if I understand correctly, the total package price has not changed, just the percentage breakdown has shifted, and that has caused the problem.
Right.
It's probably never been shifted, it's just not been disclosed in the beginning.
And that should have happened from the beginning.
If in the beginning, we noticed that there's the breakdown between labor and the material, then we may go, we will have to go out to bid the installation part of it.
Separate. And then we wouldn't get the discount.
Yes.
And the reason is caused by, when we submit the bill to pay, it broken down labor and material separate. So when you multiply, you look at the dollar figure of the project, and you say, it's exceed 10%. That's a technicality of the, county will not pay the bill, because that's, so when we got the price, they gave us a combined total.
It wasn't separated. Just one more question, so if you could get us that report, giving us more information on how this happened?
Yes.
Would it be a problem for us to bring this back by the next board meeting and for us to consider it then, after we get our report from Mr. Islam?
I would like to say something. You know, there are people out there that need to get paid again, and they have their families. I know, I know. I know, I know, I know. And they have their families. I was out there today. I was out there today and I seen beautiful work, excellent work. Work that you're going to be very, very proud of, not only on those fields, but there's more to come, which you'll hear in our comments in a few minutes. So, I would like to call for the question here. We have a first and a second. We've had discussion and it's, it's right here in front of everybody and we'll vote.
We have a first and a second for the other items, all items except number four.
Okay, we'll vote on number four separately unless there's any other comments.
Well, could I just, if we can, could I just make a motion for item four? Could I make a motion for item four that we bring this back by the next board meeting for consideration? And by that time, Mr. Islam promised us a report so we could go over this thoroughly and we can pay it then or decide not to pay it then. But, with more information from a report that you promised in the board, I think we'd be better informed and we can make a better decision then. Would approving this by the next board meeting be a problem, time-wise?
They have completed the job 100% and we are going to take the notice completion to the board in December. Or actually, in November.
Board, my recommendation, let's pull it. Let me give you the report. So, you are crystal clear why, how it happened? And a couple of weeks, we waited that long, couple of weeks, it's not going to cause any problem. We, we will communicate with the vendor. It's part of the problem they created for us. That's the way I'm going to go back to it.
And that's what Nancy has said about.
Because they, they should given us in the, begin with the breakdown of the project and we take it responsibly also. We didn't caught that mistakes, you know, as Bill stated.
Well, that's my next question. How do we review these contracts and do we get legal advice on these contracts? I mean, when we're talking this kind of money, we've got to be certain that it's just exactly what we agreed to, not, nothing ambiguous in it at all.
We do, but being a CMAS contract, it's a state contract, we, it's already gone through the process, so we did not bid this project as a Rialto High School District project. So, because the state already went through the bidding, because many districts using this artificial turf for the field.
So, basically, the state approved the contract?
Yes.
Well, then the state can pay the 1.4 million.
Well...
Just, if I understand correctly, the dollar amount will not change whether we pay it today or two weeks from now.
You're correct. The dollar amount will not change, but again, it's a technical issue, paying the bill, you exceed 10% the lever. So, my recommendation to the board, let's be clear before you act on it, so we will bring back at the next board meeting.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't bother anyone for us to bring it back to the next?
We have to vote on that.
Only consequence of this, the vendor has to wait, you know, another couple of weeks.
And there's a motion on the floor?
We, we, we still have a, we pulled four. Can we vote on one through, one, two, three, five, and we'll come back to four? So, we have a motion by Ms. Gilbert and yourself, a second. Any other discussions, one, two, three, five, because we pulled four. Any other discussion? So, we can vote on those four items. No discussion? Call for the question.
Aye.
Aye. So, motions K1, K2, 3, 5, those resolutions pass. Now, let's move back to four. And you had a motion to...
To pull an item and bring it back for the next board meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do we have discussion? Anybody else? Because I know I'd like to make some comments before we vote. Is this, Ms. Chu, is this time sensitive? I know the work has been completed.
Yes.
Is there families out there going to be suffering because they don't get paid?
They have not been paid a dime yet.
A dime? Okay. And it's, I just saw the work today. Beautiful work. So, we have a first and a second to pull this item. Vote by board members. This, the vote would be to pull the item.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
So, we have 3, 2. The item has been pulled until we have further reports and perhaps by next board meeting, we can reach a court. Thank you. Okay. Comments from superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Eyle. We, just a reminder, we have an event this Friday, October 25th. We have high school football games. Rialto High School will be playing with the Carter High School. Please, and also Eisenhower High School with Ucaipa. Please be there and support our students. It's a great event. Event will start at 7:00 PM. We'd like to see you all over at both events. And I hope member of the board who also can be there on Friday at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Islam. And next, we have comments from board members and perhaps we can start with Nancy.
Well, I did want to thank everybody for coming and I know the days get long when you sit here all night, but wanted to say that we, or several of us did go on the tour today of the Rialto High and Carter High School new track and field. It's, they're absolutely gorgeous and so, you know, my, my complaint here, of course, is nothing personal, but I just have to stand up for what's right here. But, if you have not seen the new track and field arrangements at Carter High School and Rialto High School, please go to a game. I tell you, I could feel it. I was a high school principal and standing there, I just know what that does for the pride of the students attending those schools. I know that the more pride they have in their school and the better their school appearances, the better they perform academically. So, it's just a win-win for everybody and I can't wait till Eisenhower gets done. But, that's coming soon, hopefully. We also went to see the Culinary Arts Academy and the Engineering Academy, which are housed at what used to be the old Rialto Middle School, which I literally almost took my breath away. The Culinary Academy is, is complete. We have equipment in there that they have in five-star restaurants. It's absolutely beautiful and I just cannot wait till it's full of students cooking delicious food for us and I will be the first in line. The Engineering Academy, they're still pulling everything together, but the equipment they have and the possibilities, I mean, it just makes your, the mind go wild with the possibilities that we have with those two academies and the great things we can do for our students. So, it was a really exciting trip and I'm very, very proud that we have these facilities in our district. I also attended Eisenhower's homecoming game, had a great time. They lost, but only by one point. However, at halftime, after they named the king and queen and all the homecoming stuff, I thought it was very cool. They had, had the kids vote online for the 20 most inspirational teachers and they honored those 20 teachers at the game out on the field and I thought that was just wonderful. And these teachers, you know, all of them were coming up to me. Some of them had tears in their eyes that they had been selected by their students for that and I just thought that was wonderful. And I also attended the Parents Summit and that was another great day. There was a large variety of STEM workshops, which I was happy to see because they provided a lot of very valuable information to our parents. And now with the new Engineering Academy, it all goes together, science, technology, engineering and math and hopefully we will achieve great things. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. Next, we have Ms. Gilbert.
Thank you, President Ayala. I, good evening, everyone. I too took the tour and I echo the sentiments of Mrs. O'Kelly. We have a beautiful structure there at the old Rialto Middle School that will accommodate our high achieving students in the future. I'm just looking forward to it, getting staffed and getting our students enrolled in those programs. And I want to thank the staff because they took their time. This was after school. So, the principals and the staff members, the athletic directors, we even had some of the builders come to show us, they were proud to show us what they had done, what they had accomplished in these facilities. So, I just want to thank all of you for giving us an opportunity because this was our second chance. It was canceled before because we couldn't all get together to come and to take the tour. But, this time, even some city officials and people, commissioners from the city of Rialto also joined us on the tour. So, it was really great. And speaking of the city of Rialto, it's that time of year, Halloween. We know that our kids get all excited for Halloween and I would like to encourage parents to take your children to the Halloween hijinks that is put on by the city of Rialto. Because our students from our schools participate in that. The various service clubs, key clubs and all the clubs from various middle and high schools, take the opportunity to go downtown Rialto and be there to give trick-or-treats to our children so they won't have to walk through dark neighborhoods and suffer maybe some consequences of violence and so forth. So, take your children to the Halloween hijinks and it's going to be at the city of Rialto, on Rialto Avenue. It's not going to be downtown this year, but if you went to the night out activities in, back in August, it's going to be there by the fire station and the police department. And the fire station has a haunted firehouse. So, if you haven't participated, go by and see that. I spoke with our fire chief this morning and he said it's really something. They, the firemen in Rialto went all out to make this a really fun activity for our children. And for the little ones, they may not want to go into the haunted fire station, but they will have rides and so forth, pet zoo and so forth outside for them to participate in. So, let's join our city. I was talking to Mr. Montes today about, we service the same people. So, we need to participate with them when activities are going on in our city because we service the same people. And I also attended the Parents Summit. Great activity. I enjoy it every year. Looking forward to next year. Bigger and brighter things to come. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Well, I thank you for your comments. Ms. Gilbert. Next, we have Clerk of the Board, Joseph Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's good to see your, your smiling tired faces after a full day of work. I understand. Just wanted to thank the community and let them know that we are moving forward in, through some of the toughest times Rialto has had. And we're going to do what we can. We don't always agree, but we're going to come up with the right answers as committee here. And the one question I have about the facility that was toured today, do we have a date when students will be able to, to be there? Is it next semester, next quarter? Do we know yet?
At present, I'm working on the planning. We plan to use the facility, enroll the students in next semester.
Okay.
That's our plan.
Excellent, excellent. We are a little behind plans. That was scheduled to be completed in August. They're still moving equipment and the best laid plans get messed up. The haunted firehouse, you're going to enjoy that. It is secure. I've got a key to the firehouse as a volunteer in communications and it's dark. So, it's scary dark. If you're afraid of the dark, you're going to enjoy it. Also, I would like to thank Peggy Wheeler and the committee for getting the Engineering Academy and the Culinary Academy going. It's been a long four years since inception and less the committee thinks it happens overnight, because we'd love it to. It really doesn't. But, we've got your best interest, the best interest of students and they are going to really do well in these two facilities. If anyone is interested in communications or in electronics, please contact me directly. I can be reached through the district office or my website is joemartinez.org. I'm a ham radio operator, volunteer through the community with the fire department and we are constantly looking for volunteers. I know most people are, mostly group is my age because everyone else is working or else they're interested in their cellphone and texting. But, the reality of it is, I got to thinking, how do you present something like this that really is technology that's been around since the turn of the, a century ago? Well, electronics does not change much. The principles remain the same and ham radio will teach you the principles of electronics. And I'd be willing to donate my time, as I do so much, to adults, to children, to elders. And, you know, we need to make sure our community is safe and ready for, for anything. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Vice President of the Board, Edgar Montes.
Thank you, President Ayala. Good evening. Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
I, I too was in attendance of today's tour, joining Mrs. Gilbert, our board president, Mr. Ayala and Mrs. Nancy O'Kelly. I know some people couldn't make it, but it's okay. There's always next time. I do, I would like to extend an invitation to other employees that weren't able to make it today or even our city staff, if that's okay. Maybe if the people in the city would like to come and take a tour of the Culinary Academy and Engineering Academy. It was beautiful. And since Ms. Gilbert and Ms. O'Kelly already spoke about it, I'm not going to talk too much about it. But, I do want to thank Mrs. Iris Chu, our Director of Facilities. I do want to thank Bill Ralph, Director of Maintenance. I do want to thank our Acting Superintendent, Mr. Islam. I want to thank Mrs. Peggy Wheeler for giving us an awesome tour there at the Dolores Huerto Sister Chavez Center. I want to thank Mrs. Foot from Carter High School and all her staff over there for hosting us there. And also, I also want to thank the Athletic Director over at...
Mr. Gilbert.
Mr. Gilbert.
Gilchrist.
Gilbert.
Gilbert. Over at Rialto High School for giving us a lovely tour of the new football field and track and field over at Rialto High School. Those track and fields and football fields at Carter and at Rialto, they're awesome and I can't wait to see it over at Eisenhower also. But, but when we walked on, when the board, and also want to thank Measure Y Committee, Oversight Committee members that were able to go to because they also joined in the tour. And when we walked on to, when we first walked on to the field, the track and the field turf over at Rialto High School, because it was the first one we toured, it felt like somebody, I think our board president said, it felt like walking on Dr. Shoal's footwear or something because you could just tell the difference from the concrete stepping onto those floors. So, we know that our students are going to be, you know, we saw them at Carter, they were using, it wasn't being used at Rialto when we got there, but at Carter, they're practicing football and running up and down the track and they were zooming by, so that was really good to see. I do want to say that for anyone who gets a chance to visit the academies, the Culinary Arts and the Engineering, it, you leave with an impression of like a university. I mean, they're awesome, particularly the Culinary Arts. They had every kind of heavy-duty industrial cooking equipment there. I think our board president said the only thing they needed was a wooden oven to complete it for those fire... it for those fire grilled pizzas. But, um, but, um, he did promise to bake us some bread there though because our Board President's a good baker. And it, I was just really impressed. So I want to really thank again the community who approved the Measure Y for these types of things, for, you know. So I really want to thank them and I want to thank all the people involved in making it happen, all the people who built it, the people who were overseeing the building, our staff members. I think it's awesome. And I just want to make it clear that I agree with our Board President Ayala, work completed should be worked paid. And I share that same belief, but at the same time, I agree with Ms. O'Kelly that when something like this happens, when there's an error is made, I would just like to ask that we get the proof or a report, something that we can see so we can learn from it. Because that will educate us as a board as to possibly, you know, what to watch out for, what to look for. And it's not mistrust, it's not so much mistrust or, you know, or us being upset with anyone regarding this issue. And I don't mean, you know, I don't mean to put anyone on the spot, but if we ask a question, it's in regards to what we're approving. And thank you, Mr. Islam, for offering us a detailed report so we could understand this thoroughly. Because it's hard to approve, you know, 1.4 million just off word of mouth. And again, a report would help us understand it. It'll help us grow, it'll help us learn and move forward. So no offense taken to anyone regarding that. I do want to thank our Chief of Safety, Mr. Leary, for always making us feel, you know, safe here at our Board meetings and all of our safety officers and all of their staff and our safety department. Thank you very much for always being here. Officer McNay, Officer Rodriguez, and all the other officers that join in at our, you know, bi-monthly meetings, bi-weekly meetings. You know, I see these guys walking people to their cars, hanging around in the parking lot till everybody's gone. So I really appreciate it, you know, because you never know if it's not TV cameras chasing people down, you know, you never know. So thank you again for that. And last but not least, I want to thank Joanne again for bringing up the emphasis that we need to work with our city. And the conversation came about because as we were on our tour of the Dolores Huerta S. Chavez Center, we saw the field, the baseball field, which Mr. Martinez probably remembers, some of us can recall, a year or two back, we were trying to work something out with the city regarding the baseball field that's not being utilized over there. You know, we've got adult school over there, we've got professional development over there, we've got these training academies now. And that field is not being used and right next to it is a skate park that's always filled. There's a basketball court that's always filled and the city's using those, that's their properties, and the community's using those. Why not work something out with the city where we can get that baseball field used by those kids in our community? So thank, I want to thank Ms. Gilbert again for that and just encourage the Board and Mr. Islam, you know, we want to move forward and reopening discussions with the city. Please extend that to them, that I don't think there's anybody on this Board that wouldn't like to revisit that again and see what we can work out.
Correct.
Thank you. Gracias, thank you.
Well, thank you, Vice President. You make my job easy with all the comments that were said here. I'll try to move in a little different direction so you don't have to hear everything echoed again. All the dialogue is healthy here, okay? We're just taking care of business, nothing personal. There were some members in the audience that had some concerns and wanted probably to share some comments, and that's good, that's good. But we also have an agenda that we follow and the protocol. My suggestion is, please take those notes, try to remember what you wanted to say. I know it's not always easy. And then our next meeting, you can come and speak either on the agenda or off the agenda and we'll be glad to hear you at that time. Okay, but I wanted to say that because everyone here counts, everyone, okay? Because we're a community. Okay, the Common Core, obviously, just a few comments, is here. We're going to be challenged with it. It's like resetting education all over again, the reset button. The bar is being raised, not lowered. And there's reasons for that. The college is overfilled with students right now. More money's not going to the colleges. So with this Common Core, it makes it more difficult for our kids to qualify for college. Not only that, but some of the colleges are also trying to raise the entrance requirements. That's like a double challenge with Common Core and then raise the entrance requirement with the GPA? That's scary because it's our kids who need to go to college. And so we need to make sure that we read the newspapers, we stick together, and we attend some of those meetings. So, and we'll do that, but we'll do it together. In fact, there's probably a petition going on right now. The D-LAC is, parents are signing a petition so we can take it to the Chancellor to consider that, that move because we have Common Core and our kids need a chance. To echo a little bit about our visitation with the Culinary Arts, Ms. Wheeler, that's excellent what I saw over there. You have equipment there that parallels none. I don't know of any institutions, any schools in this area that have what we have. Not only that, but the Engineering Department over there. You know, you have computer, numerical computer machines, CNCs, Computer and Numerical Control, that are going to help the kids apply the math that they're learning. This is high-level learning, okay? My word of caution, though, is this, even though we have all this equipment and we have the Culinary Arts, we have to look for some superstars to guide our kids. And just to put things in perspective, one of the Dodger, I won't mention his name, one of the Dodger pitchers in three innings makes what the President of the United States makes all year, in three innings. So to get qualification, our heroes, our superheroes, they have to have a lot of experience. They're not going to work for minimum wage or starting salary of a teacher. We have to decide whether we want to recruit them. We get a couple superstars, we've got the foundation. Our kids, you're going to watch them on television someday, coming back and saying, "I got my start in Rialto." We are moving forward. I have proof right here. Coachella Valley, every one of their students have one of these. Every one of them. Now, maybe we won't move in that direction, but there's a reason for it. Because the kids can't take their Common Core test on this. But, you know what? How many times have kids come home with homework and they've said, "If only I had a tutor to help me with factoring a trinomial, but there's nobody that can help me with it, I could succeed." But guess what? If they have this, at least in their math classes, they can turn on the video and they can see the professor, all the mom, dad has to do is, "Look at your video, son, look it over and over again till it starts making sense." Now, what makes this possible? What makes, we look at each other, Measure Y passed, that's what makes it possible. That's why we have a field out there. That's why we have greatness here in Rialto. But I want to caution you, we don't want the reputation where we don't pay our bills. I know, I know. We have business to do here. Everything we said was healthy, okay? But we need to pay our bills because if we don't and we get a bad reputation, people aren't going to want to work for us. And sometimes we need that extra guidance in areas that we're not familiar with. And also keep in mind, when we pay our bills, we're putting food on someone else's table. Thank you so much. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Hold on, Mr. President. I'd like to motion to move back into closed session.
Thank you so much. Do we, yeah, we have some unfinished business still. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, so we have a first and second to move back into closed session. Vote by more Board members?
Aye.
Aye?
And I have another motion.
Please.
That we close the meeting tonight in memory of Chief Security Officer Gordon Leary's brother. I don't know his name, but he passed away, so we want to close in memory.
Absolutely, absolutely. Very good. The motion carries, we'll move into closed session and it's been a good meeting. Thank you so much.
Yes. Oh, God.
Okay, I'm just waiting for one more. Thank you for waiting for me, Mr. President. Absolutely. Let the record show, it's now 10:48. The Board is reconvening from closed session. Mohammed, would you, you have something to report?
No action was taken in closed session.
No action was taken, but we want everybody to know, we appreciate everyone who's here. You know, we get to know each other as time progresses and there's a lot of heart in this room. There's no doubt about it. And with that in mind, we will continue to do our due diligence the best we can to provide you with the services that we agreed to do. We may not agree at times, but the decisions we make are in the best interest of everyone here, our students and our community, our staff. But with that in mind too, we need to probably close for the evening. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Definitely.
Well, did you want to close, did you want to adjourn in memory of Mr. Leary?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Leary's brother, Mr. Leary?
Mr. Gordon Leary's... What was Gordon Leary's brother's name? We don't know?
Mr. Leary.
Mr. Leary.
Yeah, let's just say, yeah, he's Leary's brother, Mr. Leary.
Mr. Leary.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Martinez, Gilbert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Time?
Time is 10:49. Meeting adjourned.